Good afternoon, welcome to this last Dunedin City Council meeting for this triennium. Welcome to councillors, to staff and the media and public. On start apologies, we have an apology from councillor Lee Vandevos. I'll move from the chair that that be accepted, second to councillor Staines. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Number two, I'll also move from the chair the confirmation of the agenda. Second to councillor Staines, any discussion on that? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. The third is just for noting, a declaration of interest, there's no resolution required there. And then number four, I'll move from the chair that the public part of the minutes of the meeting of the Dunedin City Council held on the 23rd of September be confirmed as a correct record with one small correction in the resolutions regarding aquatic services, there were some word changes that hadn't got come through. Parking constraints had been changed to access constraints and it hadn't come through, I'm informed, how about that? Made that change so, with that change from what was circulated, I'll move that they be confirmed as a correct record, second to councillor Staines. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. On to the minutes of the committee, number five, hearings committee councillor Noon.
Thank you worship, I'll move that the minutes of the hearings committee meeting held on the 18th of May 2011 be noted.
Second to councillor Hudson, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item five B councillor...
And I'll further move that the minutes of the hearings committee meeting held on the 18th of May 2011 be noted.
Second to councillor Hudson, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item five C councillor Wetherall.
Thank you sir, the hearings committee, the State Highway One, Caversham, we do note this has got a little bit of age around it, it's great to see the progress that's being made on the site. I'll move the minutes of the hearings committee held on the 4th, 5th and 6th of October, one November, be noted.
Second to councillor Noon, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item five C councillor Wetherall.
Item five D, I'll move the minutes of the hearings committee held on the 20th of November be noted.
Second to councillor Wilson, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item five E councillor Wetherall.
Thank you sir, on the greatest tree, I'll move the minutes of the hearings committee held on the 7th of February 2013 be noted.
Second to councillor McTavish, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item five F councillor Wetherall.
Now sir, we're already getting current, this is only the 10th of September, so I'm pleased to report that the minutes of the hearings committee held on the 10th of September 2013 be noted.
Second to councillor Noon, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. And item five G councillor Wetherall.
Thank you sir, before I do if you can just bear with me for one moment sir, I'll be moving the minutes of the hearings committee held on the 17th of September and that's only a couple of weeks ago. It's a delight to be able to report that all matters that can be and have been completed today, so the process for the on the triennium is in place. Sir, I just want to take a brief moment to acknowledge the committee, that I currently have had the pleasure of chairing for the last period. Paul's been with me for a long time, 15 years I think we've been together, plus a little bit less but certainly participated and involved in it. Lee more recently, Theresa more recently, Kate has been with me some time and Andrew has been my deputy for some significant period, it's six, six years? Six or nine, so I do apologize. Sorry? And Ginty, sorry Ginty. You had a gap, sorry. But sir, I just want to acknowledge the good work that that committee's done, right or wrong in their decisions, we've made, as I said, we've done it in a manner that's been hopefully acknowledged and been seen by council, it's been part of the process and I would say without a doubt it's not the RMA that this is, it holds up any progress that's been reached on it, thank you sir. I'll move the minutes of the hearings committee on the 17th of September 2013.
Second to councillor Noon, discussion? All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Right, we'll move on to the reports. Now, the Otago Rural Fire District's proposal, Graham and Sandy if you'd like to join us up here. In the first instance, this item was left on the table, some of the first instance needs to be uplifted, would someone like to move councillor Wilson, second to councillor Hudson, that the item be lifted from the table? Discussion? Put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Now what I propose to do is open it up to questions, we have an additional report and as you can see from that report, quite a bit of consultation activity has been happening since the meeting and I'll open it up to questions of Ms Graham, still with regard to that. Councillor McTavish.
Just, you worship, the report notes that there was one further meeting to be had on Friday in Middlemarch and I just wondered whether the staff and Bob would like to give us an update as to how that went.
We had a very well attended meeting, that time was right enough, we've got a number of people there, pretty representative of the emergency response, various of fire, fire police and a good number of community people, all members and councillor Wilson and the meeting was a vibe of all the army and the music, it was a great, it was a good unity for support for the enlarged fire proposal, whilst they, the committee had assurance that the resources in the local committee would be on figure of the problem.
Councillor Connors.
Thank you, it's just confirmation, a family member lives in Waikauwiti and they were concerned, they've got a fire engine or maybe two fire engines up there and they were worried if there was a fire, are they going to lose their fire engines and if not, what is the arrangement? Is it covering what's there now?
The firing is not part of the proposal, they separate from that, the resource of Waikauwiti process is a dual fire tanker, water tanker and the state proper arrangements that will be in place to ensure that that tanker stays there. See, for a reason at the moment, that reason remains unchanged.
Right, so if there was a fire in Waikauwiti, there's no other, they don't have to wait?
There will be no change in the response.
Okay, thank you, that's good.
Are there any further questions? Okay, now I'll be, to some extent, by Ms Graham because I understand, I think there was a motion moved by councillors, but she, second to councillor McTavish, I think we need to consider whether you want to leave that motion there or whether we want to move on to, back to the original recommendations.
I'm happy to go back to the original of seconded.
So you would?
I'm happy to withdraw the motion of councillor.
So that motion's withdrawn and we revert then to, would someone like to move the original recommendations, councillor Wilson, do you?
I'm happy to move but I presume that we have to move the new ones on the 6.1 as well as to a, on the previous agenda. Today's one, 6.1, is that we, that this report be, so we've done the uplifting, that the additional information contained in this report be noted.
Yes.
I'm sorry, that part two and two A from the previous one.
So you're moving that and the original recommendations?
Yes, you're thinking.
Second to councillor McTavish?
I'm having a second but I think that we possibly need to amend to a three such that it indicates that, well this is my personal opinion, but that it indicates that those individual stakeholder agreements will protect the assets in the individual communities in which they're currently situated, given that those were the concerns that were raised by the, by the community boards.
That would certainly be the intention of those groups, you know, mainly like what they think of them. That would bring, that is exactly what those groups want us to say.
It's currently just that they'll be established but it doesn't, doesn't explain what is within them.
They're all on the same day, a group of elections again and so on.
This is, this is to a three?
That's right, yeah.
So can, can you just become, explain the extra wording you wish to?
Well it's possible that I may just have to work on it with councillor Wilson and Bash, where I would be going with it is that, as I read in the report and certainly the community board that I attended, meaning that I attended on Thursday, that there was some concern amongst those who attended that some of the resources which are currently stationed within those communities may be at risk of being moved, assurance was given by...
I would suggest that the, the individual stakeholder agreements, they identified existing arrangements in particular?
Protect, protect existing arrangements, sorry.
Is this where you can check that out?
Yeah, okay.
Can I, can I just ask a question of Sandy with regard to that? Existing stakeholder arrangements are with, with regard to equipment that's owned by New Zealand Fire Service, as I understand it, is that not correct? Because the only ones listed are...
No, it's lost it.
Well the only thing I can go on is the, is this.
That's a section 15, that's not a stakeholder agreement. Section 15 agreements exist anyway.
So the section 15 agreements exist for the likes of, for example Portobello or, at the moment this, oh no, Portobello was mentioned, Waikauwiti, because Middlemarch and Portobello are the only two mentioned in here.
It's for a regular one as well. They have been in the...
They are in there already, so there are existing stakeholder agreements with all of the relevant areas.
The section 15 agreement, what that covers is the agreements that the New Zealand Fire Service have got control, so what the...
Identity, i.e. the enlarged rural fire, the enlarged rural fire district, that section 15 agreement will be with them, which won't change. Does that, does that make sense?
It probably does to a more intelligent person than myself but...
There are two, two different frameworks, there is the agreements with the New Zealand Fire Service, which are the section 15 agreements mandated by the legislation, then there are the stakeholder agreements that will exist between the rural fire authority stakeholders and the new board, it's a slightly different thing, so they sit side by side.
Am I mistaken or is that focus on those projectors, the way out? Slightly wrong. I think they need to be, councillor Bizet?
I just didn't get the wording that Ms Graham was alluding to with regards to the motion that Ginty put up, can we have that?
Yes, I think it's highlighted there now, John. I'll read it, it's to a three, that council, as the Dunedin Rural Fire Authority resolves to enter into individual stakeholder agreements to identify and protect existing related arrangements following the establishment of the future enlarged rural fire district.
Yeah, I mean, I have some difficulties with that.
Well, can you hold until, I'll get through the questions, are there any more questions for clarification? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, I'll open it up now for councillor Wilson, do you wish to speak to it for a start?
No, I'm doing it right of reply.
Right, councillor Bizet?
Yeah, well it's just to protect existing arrangements, I mean that really goes in account as what the, the, this committee that's been set up to look at this issue is trying to address, if I've got the, if I've got that understood correctly, because there'll be some units or equipment in one fire area that may be transferred to another that's been, that's, one might be, have more equipment and units than they need and others may not have enough, is that, have I got that wrong? Okay, could you explain that to me then, what will happen? Can you explain existing arrangements then?
Yep, I'll try and do it as simply as I can, the arrangements that are currently there are there for a purpose, so like council, they relook at things every five years, so they're there for a purpose, so the stakeholders, so the agreement that the stakeholders can have with the new identity is that those, that equipment and resources stay where they are now, so there'll be no change. Does that make sense?
It makes sense in that they retain them but it doesn't make sense if you want to have complete utilization of all the equipment across the newly incorporated fire service.
Sure, I mean if there was a fire in Palmerston for example and the tanker was required from Waikauwai to go to Palmerston, that happens, isn't it? Yep, so then it goes back, so when the fire's out, the tanker goes back to Waikauwai.
What, this won't stop there being increased levels of service to the communities but it will protect a minimum level?
Yeah.
Can I just clarify, it seems we're still stuck on the confusion that we had at the last meeting between the rural fire service and the volunteer fire service for domestic fires and we seem to be still stuck on the confusion between the different resources that each has and my understanding of this is that it's an individual stakeholder agreement to identify and protect the existing domestic volunteer fire service resource, is that?
No, no.
The opposite, yeah.
So then New Zealand Fire Service is totally different from rural fire service and New Zealand Fire Service, if you like, are the red trucks, so...
I can understand that.
Yep, and rural fire services resources are totally different from the New Zealand Fire Service resources and that is why there was a section 15 agreement there so that New Zealand Fire Service can use rural fire services resources and vice versa because it's a two-way thing. So rural fire can use New Zealand Fire Service resources because they're available and vice versa. Yep, so they're two different resources.
Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Thompson.
Look, I do support this, I had significant reservations at the last meeting and a number of questions and they have in large part been answered. I think the problem that we're all struggling with is this paragraph in the last, the original report which says is it is anticipated that the board of the OERFD will seek to reduce operating costs through rationalisation of the amount and location of operational resources, including those currently owned by council and located in various parts of the city. So that's what we're struggling with, a clear statement that implies that stuff will be shifted and I accept that you can't mandate for the next till eternity where things are going to end up but if you are assuring me that the existing stakeholder agreements are such that it is extraordinarily unlikely that somebody sitting in an office in central Otago would say it makes a lot more sense to have that water tanker sitting, I don't know where, but then I'm comfortable with the direction in which this is travelling.
Since that initial report, we have had additional information which is attached to the new paper today which clarifies that and yes, we can give that undertaking.
Councillor...
I'll do it to my right.
Councillor Noon.
I support the recommendations in front of us today and I accept there probably has been a little bit of confusion to get to this point but effectively, my understanding is that with the section 15 relationship between the fire service and the Dunedin rural fire authority which is going to become an Otago regional fire authority, stays in place, the stakeholder agreement effectively between the territorial authorities and the other key stakeholders is going to pan out the actual management and the governance on a day-to-day basis and we've heard from Graham and Sandy at the meetings that they attended in the last week or so, that the concerns of the local volunteer fire brigades have essentially been met because they've been told that there will not be any change and I see on a regional basis that effectively we all have the same focus, we want to have the resource in the right place where it's needed and clearly over time, the volunteer fire brigades who work very closely with Graham and his team have over time developed a knowledge of their local communities so they've built up a resource that deals with the demands of providing a local fire, a local volunteer fire service to those local communities. So I'm quite comfortable where it's heading and I see that the board structure, we're obviously going to have, or the territorial authorities are going to have membership on that too for the, for the, the five local authorities and then stakeholder partnership or agreement as a member from each territorial authority, so I think our interests are well served and I'm confident that this will be the best thing in the long term.
Councillor McTavish.
Yeah, well I too just want to explain why I now support what is in front of us. I, like councillor Thompson, had some concerns which now have been to a large degree addressed by the information we have in front of us. I also had the opportunity to attend the Peninsula Community Board meeting which was fantastic because we did, like Middlemarch and up the coast, have New Zealand Fire Service representative present who spoke to the relationship between the New Zealand Fire Service residential response and the rural fire response, which as you articulated you worship, are separate things albeit complementary and they did speak to the importance of having both of the assets available in the event of a response, so that is why I proposed and am glad to have accepted the change to a, or it was to a three which basically enshrines what staff, the information that staff were giving to stakeholders that attended those workshops over the past week and that is that the stakeholder agreements will protect the existence of the rural fire response resources in those areas in which we currently have them, which was basically the only concern that was raised at those meetings. So given that and given the fact that, and thanks very much to the staff who have taken the evenings over the last week to do those community meetings, I'm comfortable now that we have engaged with the community, we have heard their concerns, we've amended the, the recommendations to ensure that those stakeholder agreements are in place and if, and at some point in the future that new authority does see that there is a need for those resources to be elsewhere, it enshrines their need to come back to us as stakeholders and to have that discussion again about why it's necessary to move that resource and that being could be something that we consider as a stakeholder but it basically ensures that they do have to come back to us so that that conversation can be had and that's the important thing from my perspective as an elected representative for this area. So with those amendments, I support the recommendations.
Okay, further speakers? Councillor Wilson, you're right of reply.
Thank you, I also want to thank Sandy and Graham for their sterling work at very short notice, drumming up meetings and attending them, it was no main task. I also want to acknowledge Phil Malhop who took Andrew and Ginty and myself for a tiki tour around the Alexandra depot recently while we were up there at a meeting and enthused and gave me great assurance that this will work, he is a keen fireman himself and, and he was quite passionate about it, he was quite sure that resources will go up in number rather than being any reduction, so that gave me some reassurance. I, the only doubt I have about, and it's not a doubt about this process and I'm fully supportive of it, is that we often worry about tankers and machinery, we've, in my six years here, had very little discussion on volunteers and I think one thing that will improve under this is the opportunity of volunteers being encouraged to join at some level a response team and I'm hoping that that will be something that will come out of this, but more importantly, I'm assured that Graham's wife can now plan a holiday and he'll be able to go on it with her rather than having to fight fires, so thank you.
Thank you, right, it's been moved and seconded and all the speakers, I'm going to put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Thank you. Now we move on to item seven, the annual reports of Dunedin City Holdings and the group companies, can I invite Mr Crombie, Mr Dodd to join us up front here?
I guess we get a council briefing, we go along, thank you councillors, I guess we'll just back up from the six key products from the original release and just to highlight for council, the key financial changes this year, the profit has moved from a deficit of $5 million last year to a surplus of $20 this year, the distribution from the holding company to council entities has met the budget expectations at $15.7 million, the cash which is the most important piece, the operating cash out of subsidiaries has moved from $19.5 million up to $35 million and that's after paying the venture payment across, that solid cash generation has allowed the holding company group to reduce its net debt by $10 million and the parent company to reduce its slogan by $300,000 and we have made some significant progress around the governance structures within the group and basically I think the point from this is that the work in the, in the group from the staff, the management, the governors has been a pretty full on effort this year and I think that's reflected in your financial results to 30th of June, but have to answer any questions from there from anybody.
Okay, questions councillors? Councillor Hudson.
Thank you, are you taking questions on all the reports?
Quite heavy to hear about, yeah.
I wonder why when the carbon credits were sold forward by City Forests, the discussion and intention there was we would be able to afford to pass special dividend to the Dunedin City Council. Given the council's financial situation, why was the decision taken to pay half $10 million off the loan rather than making a special dividend payment to the council to help reduce rates?
Obviously I was not around when those original discussions were had but certainly that was the thinking and the, the wiseness, if that's the correct term, of the decision to sell forward the carbon credits was proven this year when those sales were made and I think the numbers coming across the city were about $5.7 million based on that. The decision to balance steady out was taken by the directors of the company at that time given the view that we had met the expectations of the city for the $15.7 million coming across this particular year and looking forward as to how we would go in future years from there. The directors of City Forests of course are looking at the balance of their company and making sure that that's in place, so I can't give you an explicit answer as to why that decision was made, when it was made but that's the situation that it was in.
Any further questions? Right, well in that case, I will move from the chair the recommendations on, a recommendation on page 7.1 that the council received in Oakley and reported Dunedin City Holdings and subsidiaries, second councillor Staines, any discussion? If there being none, I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Thank you.
I would like to note something else here in this context and that is the contribution of the directors of DCHL up to this point and I'd like to publicly note and express appreciation for the efforts of Mr Shale, Mr Bayless and as a consultant, Mr Larson and move that they, that be noted and the appreciation of council for their efforts be expressed, second to councillor Staines, would anyone like to speak to that?
I'm going to put that, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Now move on to item eight, the annual reports from the DBL and DVML. Mr Burden, welcome.
Would you like, Mr Burden, would you like to preface any questions with remarks?
Yeah, perhaps if I can just make, make one or two comments, so I'm conscious that I was obviously away last week when the report was made public, I guess just to... I guess, um, just echoing, um, the way that Graham carried forward, there's a couple of highlights from, from, um, our annual report this year. First one, clearly is the improvement in revenues from the previous year. So, uh, core operating revenue has increased by 23%. Um, clearly shows that we're heading in the right direction. Um, expenditure likewise is heading in the right direction, so it's decreased by 10%. So what that means is that, um, the net profit before rent, pension receipts and taxation, uh, increased from a loss of 320,000, uh, in the previous year to a surplus of 2.46 million dollars, uh, this year. Now, that's, as I said, a, a move in the, the right direction. Um, there's still some further improvements that we believe as a company can be made. And that's clearly what we're trying to achieve as we move forward. Um, obviously the council have been given, uh, an overview in terms of some of the numbers of events and both people who have been through the stadium, um, during the past 12 months. And it's probably also worthwhile me pointing out that the period, um, for this annual report is reflective of the operations at the stadium only. So the financials for the Dunedin Centre and Town Hall effectively come onto the books as of the first of July 2013. So there aren't any figures from the operation, operation of the Dunedin Centre and Town Hall included in this year's, uh, report. Other than that, I'm happy to take any questions that the councillors may have.
Do you? Councillor Thompson?
Um, when, when those other operations come across, um, have the directors a view as to how they intend to report, um, in future? Because, uh, the, the difficulty that, um, I see is that, uh, these things will be amalgamated and reported as a single revenue line, which will make it quite difficult for people to see how the various aspects of it are going. And I wonder, is that something that's been considered and what the intention is?
In terms of the presentation for the 2013, 14 annual report, um, the directors haven't really given that a great deal of consideration at this point. What I can say to you is that in terms of the way that we manage our budgets, uh, we manage our budgets on a venue by venue basis. So we report revenues for the stadium, separate to the revenues from the Dunedin Centre and Town Hall. Likewise, we report expenditure separately. And then in addition to that, we obviously have expenditure, um, for business support expenses. So by that I mean marketing, which is common to both venues, um, the costs of administration, human resources and so on.
Good question. Councillor McTavish?
This may be more of a question that the directors, um, for the directors, um, but on page four of the DBL, um, report and the outlook, um, it is noted that the stadium, or in the director's opinion, the stadium will require considerable investment and capital improvements in the future. Um, and this will require the company and the DCC to further consider the funding arrangements for the stadium. Um, can you expand a little on what is required?
Um, what I can say is that, um, at the end of last, the last calendar year, an asset management plan was prepared. Um, the asset management plan for the stadium is effectively divided into two parts. Uh, one is the day to day maintenance, which is the responsibility of Dunedin Venues Management Limited. And the other is the capital replacement of plant equipment, um, and other building elements, which is the responsibility of Dunedin Venues Limited. That asset management plan, um, has a lifespan of 50 years. It will be updated on an annual basis. Uh, but the determination of how that capital plant, uh, building elements replacement programme is funded has yet to be determined. So if I can give you an idea, the first item of capital plant replacement or capital replacement item will take place in around year five. That's what it's currently programmed for. So there are a number of, um, years before, um, the first item of key expenditure comes forward.
And just in terms of, um, the, the directors go on to say further that this will require the, the company and the DCC to further consider the funding arrangements for the stadium. Um, are directors, is that asset management plan feeding into discussions around long-term planning or DCC or is that?
It would be fair to say, councillor, that those, um, those discussions will take place between the directors of our board and also with DCHL as the agent of city council to see how that can come back to council at some point in the future.
Thank you.
Councillor Lewis?
Darren, I just wondered, uh, your comment with regards to the drop in expenditure by 10% um, for the last 12 months, uh, how likely is that trend going to continue, uh, in the foreseeable future? Or you sort of indicate that potentially there may be more savings over the short, medium term? But I suppose my key question is, are we able to retain the expenditure at those lower levels going forward?
Yeah, I should clarify that, councillor. Um, my view is that the expenditure levels are now about as low as they possibly can be. Um, for example, over the last 12 months, um, staff costs are reduced by something like a half a, half a million dollars. So there's been a significant decrease in, um, in, in staffing costs. And the resources are, uh, in that regard, are probably about as, as low as I would like them to see, uh, without there being a significant impact on the ability to generate revenue. Um, so, uh, in terms of, um, expenditure, that, that's one part of it. Um, what you need to also bear in mind is that fixed costs of the stadium, and we're only talking about the stadium here, are about half of, of, of the overall cost. So it's quite a high percentage in terms of, um, overall costs are actually fixed costs, which we can do nothing about. Um, my view is that the, um, expenditure is probably at a level, um, which won't go any, any lower. Uh, it'll probably be maintained at that, that kind of level. And no doubt there will be some sort of increase over a period of time, as you would normally expect through CPI adjustments and so on. So the, the issue here is for us to work, uh, more, um, efficiently and effectively with the resources that we have, uh, bearing in mind that we also are operating the Dunedin Centre and Town Hall. So we also have six staff who are allocated to that venue and to ensure that we can use our resources across our venues to, um, increase revenues over a period of time.
Councillor Butcher?
Oh, um, Darren, I was at a conference at the Town Hall the other day with the, um, Architectural Federation of Architectural Drafts people. It was really good conference and everybody raved about the town hall. So that was nice to hear that. Um, but while I was there, I was just a little concerned about the lack of colour, especially with that beautiful ceiling. And I wondered if in the next few years' time, you might actually put some money, ask for some more money in the budget to get that ceiling painted to the sort of glory that it needs to be, for example, um, over the road at the region. I just wondered if there may be some room?
Um, yeah, there's, that's clearly an option.
I'm sorry, I'm not critical because I know it's cut there because of the budget.
I guess that there is one, one point as well is that the, within the, the fit out of the town halls, I presume you're talking about the town hall space, there is, um, uh, LED coloured LED lighting, which can be used to, to tone or colour tone the venue, depending on the nature of use. So that's also another way of bringing colour into the venue.
Councillor Thompson?
It's just really a follow-up to councillor McTavish's question around the future capital expenditure. Um, given that, it strikes me, I, short of, um, some very, very significant change in the revenue projections for DVML, um, it strikes me as that there are only two places for any capital expenditure to come from. It's either from DCHL, which is in effect then a reduction in potential dividend back to council, or it's from council itself. So, um, and it, without wishing to make any judgement on whether it's appropriate or, or not, I'm, I'm not doing that. But, um, we have a, you know, a 10-year plan and we have a projected capital spend in that. So, um, we, at what point do we, um, become aware of that and the nature of it in terms of our, uh, of our capital spend? Uh, it's unclear to me as to when we're going to hear about that and how we would be expected to accommodate that within, um, within our annual plans, uh, a long-term plan.
I, I think the answer to that question is it would, it would need to start coming forward via DCHL, uh, during the course of this financial year. Um, clearly the asset management plan was, um, established last year. It's due for an update, um, by the end of this calendar year, at which point, um, there, there needs to be some further discussion with DCHL, um, to see how that can be progressed.
Mr Waters?
Yeah, and following on from that, I, I would consider this to be a key issue that you need to address as part of the next long-term plan, um, so we can start having some preliminary discussions in the next 12 months on this. And then we can lock in any budget considerations for the long-term plan.
Councillor Brown?
Do you, um, Darren, my first question has been answered now. I, um, I was going to suggest what the chief executive has just articulated, that council does need, um, an indication going forward for its financial planning. But given your response to, uh, further councillor, the other councillors in relation to operational costs, and given that we now know that you've had that bedding in period, and so therefore you've got your, uh, a pretty good handle on your operational costs, what sort of, um, focus is the directors now having on growing the income base? Because we did have a conversation with our community about, uh, ways and means about increasing the revenue of the stadium. And, uh, I would just like to know, you know, where your board has got to in relation to the opportunity to grow that income base of, of the stadium operational budget?
Yeah. Um, I think if you were to compare Forsyth Bar Stadium, uh, to any other stadium in the country, what you would see is, um, starting to emerge a pattern of, um, somewhat unique events or rather unusual events. You know, stadium is generally considered as a place where rugby, football, other sport is played. What we're starting to see occur is, um, more, um, variety of events. So the events we've had over the past 12 months, like the rodeo, um, Nitro Circus, Ride the Rhythm, those types of events, um, those are the, those are the ones that we want to try and grow. So if I can pick on one of those, Ride the Rhythm, it would be a, a very good example. Um, that was an event that worked very, very well, um, earlier this year. Um, that event is going to be coming back, um, next year. We're just working through some details with the promoter of that event and we want to see if we can grow that into a, a larger event on an, on an annual basis. We've also recently had, um, the, the Beer Fest, uh, which we ran with, um, with OUSA. And we've also got some other more unusual, um, events that are coming up, which make, um, significant use of the, um, the slab in the ODT stand. I think one of the issues that we've come to recognise over the last 12 months in particular is that we shouldn't underestimate, um, the, the level of utilisation that we can get out of that, that slab in particular and the events that we can put through there. So there's a lot of focus, um, and discussion around the board table in respect of the event strategy to do with, um, to do with those types of things. Um, clearly building the relationships with our key venue hires, um, has also been, uh, high on the, uh, high on the priority list. So the relationships with the NZIU, um, Ataga Rugby, Highlanders and so on, um, is, is really positive and we're working hand in hand with those organisations to maximise revenue, not only for them, but also for us. So there's a number of initiatives that are, that are going on around the board table.
Just one further question and following up, I can remember quite clearly, there was a number of suggestions from the community about a pyramid tourism attraction, i.e. flying fox or a digital, um, uh, events. Uh, are, are they still being considered in any way?
Yes, they are. We're, we're actually, um, commenced some discussions now with, um, some other parties in terms of how we can try and achieve some of those things. Um, we, we, some of those, to be fair, are probably a little bit aspirational, but we've got to, we've got to be aspirational to, 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 to reach as high as we possibly can. So we are working on those during the course of this, this financial year. We hope to have more information in due course on this.
Councillor Hudson?
Darren, congratulations on the year and the improvement, and particularly on the numbers of people that are using the stadium. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
I think the thing that we mustn't forget in relation particularly to the stadium, but the town hall as well, and Fliss has just mentioned a conference that we've been held within the last couple of weeks, is the economic impact on the whole city. So we've obviously got to keep that in mind when we're, when we're evaluating the success or otherwise of the stadium. Uh, I was surprised when you, uh, responded to Sid's question then, that you didn't mention that there might be other significant events coming to the stadium over the next few months. And I hope that is the case and that you'll be in a position to make some comment on that soon, as soon as possible. Uh, when you spoke of the requirement of capital expenditure, you talked of year five being the next lung of capital expenditure. But I think there are a lot of rate payers in the city that would support the capital expenditure improvements to the sound system. And I just wondered if you could tell us where you're looking to with that?
Um, yes, we have, um, carried out, I guess, two separate exercises, um, in respect of, of the, um, sound system. The first is to the internal areas within the lounges and the corporate suites. Um, and work is, um, basically happening now to, um, install, uh, a systems in those areas. Um, the, the big issue for us, of course, though, is the sound system out in the stadium bowl. And when I talk about the sound system, I should be very clear about this. Uh, the sound system is the, the in-house PA system. So it's not the sound system associated with, um, the production that a concert promoter would bring in for a, a particular concert. It's, um, the, the issue is with the in-house PA system. So one of the examples, it's been a couple of times this year when, um, some speeches have been made on the pitch and people have simply been unable to hear what has been said. Um, that's not a cheap fix. Um, the investigations that we've, um, have carried out, um, has got, uh, two or three different options, um, as, as solutions for that. Um, but we're talking a magnitude of half a million to 800,000 dollars to, to fix that, that issue. Um, there is clearly, there was always a, a, another way in which is a temporary solution, which clearly we're doing for the bigger events. But when we have a smaller event where the hire, for example, might not be able to afford to bring in supplementary speakers for a, um, for a game, Ataga Rugby is, is a good example, um, that's when we have some of those issues. So we've got, um, some solutions, uh, on the table, which is being debated at the current time by the, the board. Um, I suspect that it probably won't be until the end of the year, uh, when some clear resolution will be, um, uh, decided upon in terms of how, how we should move forward. But we, we, we know what the, what the options are to solve the problem. It's a question of, um, how we go about finding the, the funds to, to carry out the fix.
Councillor Whitherall?
So the question was this, in the last period, council have granted money for community use, to support community use. Can you report on the progress in general terms of how that fund has been useful and what the likelihood is, the demand and the maximum? Just, just a feel for how that is adding to the value of the use opportunity as a...
Um, it's been, um, effectively in place now for six months in terms of the reporting that we have done back to DCC staff. Um, and I think that, um, it's probably fair to say that it's been a, a, a learning curve for both, um, the DCC staff involved and us in terms of the, the mechanism for reporting. And we obviously look to improve that as we're now in the, in the first financial year of reporting the outcome of that. Um, what I can say is that based on the, um, the estimates of, uh, value provided to community uses, for that six-month period, it was in excess of $375,000. Now councillors will no doubt recall that the service level agreement is for a sum of $750,000 per year. So it, um, it, we are currently, um, ensuring that that, um, that value is being reached. Um, the issue for us going forward is to ensure that a wider variety of community uses are able to be used. I mean, clearly over the past, um, six months or so, the, um, the, the ones that stick out are, um, are events such as the, uh, Relay for Life, which was a cancer society event. Um, but we've also have the, the stadium markets in there and other, um, community organisations have had use of the stadium, including schools, not-for-profit organisations and incorporated societies.
So the question then follows, that as a community group, it's all in the time what the city... by the city operated by the venue. If you take an example of Relay for Life, I find that a little bit difficult to understand why the city should subsidise community use, the stadium has a responsibility to do that. I'm not targeting them per se, but there must be some activities that are in the goodwill scope of what the stadium can do for the wider community of the city without using the fund to subsidise the cost. And others' costs, and you all knows that things are pretty much the cost every time you have to go. But there must be a credible commitment by the venue to provide some community mix as well.
Yeah, and that's absolutely right, and that's what we are, I guess, continuing to improve upon. One of the key challenges that we face in trying to achieve that outcome is obviously the discussion we're having around how do we increase our revenues? So at the same time as trying to increase our revenues without increasing our expenditure, we're also at the same time then having to try and deliver these community events, which there will always be some sort of cost associated with doing that.
Thank you, sir. councillor Atherton.
Thank you, worship. Darren, just jumping back to the sound system issue again, and I certainly don't want to go on a witch hunt in any way, shape or form, but prior to the stadium being built, there were extensive acoustic engineer reports and recommendations to make sure that the sound system in the bowl area for public address use was going to be well and truly adequate. And it appears that what we've got is actually way short of what we were assured was going to be. Do you know how that happened?
Simple answer is no. I know that having had the discussions with the acoustic experts, they are of a firm view that we probably have about 20% of what we actually need. So there is a, you're absolutely right. I mean, there is a significant shortfall in terms of what is actually needed.
Further to that, your worship. At the time, it was highlighted by, I think, numerous people, that the specs came out from the acoustic engineers, that those specs were way below what was actually going to work. And from my understanding is, there was a wringer around the funding, and it was all funding-based. But instead of the information coming to us having been such that, hey, this is a budget system and it's not really going to do the job properly, we were told that it was going to do the job properly. And that it was in fact a cost-cutting measure, so to speak, to try and help keep the whole project on track budget-wise. Can you comment on that?
Clearly, that's not the case.
councillor Collins.
Darren, a comment in the print media, in the local sports media, recently concerned me a little, and I'm not sure if it reached you at all. But while television and radio, I can't speak for them, they are probably quite happy down there. But the print media comment was along the lines that they started out being very happy with their setup in the stadium, then not long after they were downgraded, kicked out of their situation, downgraded again, and they've been downgraded again. And whether it was a facetious comment at the end or not, there was just like the old days at Carradog, that their next step is to operate out of a container on that OTT slab with spectators walking in front of them. And whether that was facetious or true, I don't know. But it does concern me that when an international event is staged there, as such will be in two weeks, when we have the Wallabies and the All Blacks, and a big contingent of print media come in, how they are treated at a venue can be reflected in the way that they cover the stadium, the city and the event, of course, that they're covering. So is there much truth in that?
I'd like two comments to that. The first comment is that I think that the original story in the print media came about during the middle of a construction phase to improve things for the upcoming test match. So there was probably a transition phase that was going on at the time. My second comment is that I can assure you, the print media will probably have a better seat at the test match than you will. Can I get a refund? Take a typewriter? No.
So they're okay?
They're okay.
councillor Wilson.
Thanks, Darren. Just going back to the issue of, and I know that you've highlighted the fund, the $750,000 service level on the second paragraph of your report, which is absolutely fine. But when I go into the actual financials, I'm surprised not to see a line item in there of the service level as an income stream, only because when you report half-yearly, presuming that amount is paid out in full at the start of the financial year, and I'm not quite sure if that's the case or not, there would be a liability if you don't, yeah, for the events otherwise.
My understanding is it's invoiced on a monthly basis, and paid on a monthly basis.
If you provide the events or not?
Or not, no, it's just paid in advance. So what happens is, under the service level agreement, we have a responsibility to report to council staff on a six-monthly basis. But actually, meetings take place between the relevant staff on a more frequent basis than that.
That's fine, but take an example where there are hold of events from January to June, for example. In your six-monthly report, presumably you would be then have a liability to hold those events, because you've banked up some income. You shouldn't really have it as your income stream, because it's a liability that you haven't events to yet. And, does that make sense?
Yeah, so what happens is we treat the $750,000 service level agreement as income. So that comes in as our revenue. And then any expenditure that we have in putting those events on comes out as one of our event costs. So it appears in the expenditure. But it won't, it's not, it won't be separated out in the annual report. So there is a separate report that is issued to council staff on a regular basis, which outlines exactly what the value is that is being provided for a particular event that takes place. And it also outlines the cost that we have borne for putting that on.
And we can find that information out from council staff if we want it, if we're still going to be here after this week.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, and just on that, and I don't know if the relevant general manager, McReese, would wish to comment on this, but there has been exchanges recently between DCC staff and DVML precisely on this issue. And I think it's fair to say that the information that we've received from DVML to date is fine, but it's work in progress. I think we want to see a good year in operation in terms of this fund, and then we can have a full report for council on community use and how it relates to the $750,000. There are some comments which staff have been making to DVML around this, particularly around the diversity of community use. There's a lot of dependence, for instance, on several events, several uses, stadium market being one. So I think there is a message to DVML here from staff, that we would like to diversify the programme.
Well, that's great. And one of the other issues is sitting on the grants committee is knowing that there isn't any double dipping of that fund for this purpose. The only other question is, presumably, and I have some questions as to how that's dealt with accounting-wise, if it's acknowledged there's a DCC supplementary income separately. But I'll leave that to the accountants, not me. The other issue, though, is the grant for the events, how that will come into the next lot of accounts? Because presumably that subsidy will be separately itemised? Or are you presuming you're going to deal with that in the same manner?
My understanding is that that will be treated as an advance to the company, so it won't necessarily appear within our accounts. Because it's basically a payment from city council to whatever the event is going to be. And what happens is we then return any funds unused at the end of the year. But at the moment, that event attraction fund agreement is still a work in progress. It hasn't been signed by us yet.
That's the important point. I think there was a discussion last week with one of the board members of DVML. It does need to be concluded, and we need to have some discussions with councillors about how precisely what the mechanics are around that event attraction fund. And also what it means for DVML in terms of not only its accountancy arrangements, but also its cash flow.
I'm certainly indicating that I'd like to set us a line item, should I be there?
councillor Tom.
Darren, I recently found myself at a concert in Auckland, sitting next to a promoter who's promoted events in the stadium and was, I should say, very complimentary of the support that she'd received from stadium staff. So pass that on. But it was interesting in talking with her to get a better understanding of what some of the reticencies might be around promoting events down here. And one of the obvious ones, and it's not a new one for Dunedin, is the slowness of Dunedin people to book and the increased risk that takes. But it strikes me that that requires a quite an important degree of marketing think about events. Because we're still trying to build a reputation as a place that you might, for example, want to promote a concert at. And we know, for example, that, I mean, I was at Paul Simon, the sound where I was was absolutely fantastic. But my wife, who's an average height for a woman, couldn't see a thing. So for her, the sound was absolutely fantastic, but she still hasn't seen the concert. People who were sitting high up had fantastic view, but then they were the ones I talked to who said the sound was crap. Now, it strikes me that we've got to take better control over this in terms of where we sell tickets. And if it's just the promoter's decision as to whether to put a screen in, it seems to me that that kind of thing is going to affect whether people come again. And it's really, that's really, really critical to our building a reputation that promoters will want to take a punt on, because the crowds will want to come. And I wonder, is that something that you're actively looking at? Because we can't sell tickets in places where people are not going to have a good experience, and we can't run concerts that people can't see. So what do we do about it?
It is an area which we have been very active in recently. So since the experiences of Paul Simon and Aerosmith, there have been a number of changes that we have made to our, I guess, our standard terms and conditions which we issued to promoters when we first start talking about events. So to give you some sort of flavour of what I'm talking about, one good example is that for a sports event, one of the best places to watch the event is from within the members' lounges. A concert event, that's probably one of the worst places to watch a concert because of the very issues that you're talking about. So what we're doing now, when we enter our discussions with the promoters around a concert event, is to say to them, well, sorry, the lounges are off limits. You're not going to sell tickets there. What we're going to do is we're going to offer our members a preferential right to buy a ticket on the pitch. And if they then want to go and utilise their lounges for dinner, drinks, whatever it might be, then they can go and do that. So we've already made some changes along those sorts of lines. And we're very conscious of, I think the other issue you're talking about really is the scalability of the venue. So there's not much point trying to sell tickets to the might-attend stand, which is about as far away from the stages you can possibly get if you're only going to get about 10,000, 15,000 people in the venue. So likewise, we've also got plans in place now where we can actually scale the venue as we're selling tickets effectively. So we can still sell the various categories, but it's a solution that we've worked through with a couple of the promoters already.
councillor Stevens.
Most of the questions that I wanted to ask have been asked. So if I could just actually speak to the, when it's moved, I'd be interested.
councillor Brown. senior councillor Staines, discussion. councillor Stevens.
I thank very much for answering all of our questions. It's really, really useful. And I suppose this is a process to report to the whole of council about the financial. But obviously, there's a lot that we're really interested in, because it's so new, that when the new councillor, whoever is on it, arrives, I think there's good opportunity to, you know, bring a lot of these issues forward for their consideration. So I'm very interested in the dates that these things will come forward, or to whoever is on council, such as this, the future capital investment needs to be in time for annual plan. I've always liked the idea of these extra tours, which councillor Collins has always been talking about, and to report on that and how that's progressing, how our events attraction fund is progressing. And that would be great to know about. Issues with booking, which we all care about constantly. But for me, the biggest issue is about this community access fund. It's 0.75 million, so it's a lot of money per year. And diversity, I'm glad to hear that that's going to be reported on. But for me, I'd really like to know whether the event is in prime time, the community event, or non-prime time? And if that's been charged at the full commercial rate, or compensated full commercial rate, or if you have kindly discounted it so that they're not quite pulling so heavily upon the fund. So that's the information I'd like to know, because we are having issues with community grants that we give separately, feeling like it's almost verging on double dipping. And we really look forward to that information.
The speaker is councillor Collins.
Darren, it doesn't want to be negative, but you're here, so I'm a bit in. Just something for you and the marketing people to think about in the future. And I wouldn't have brought it up, but it's come to me from a couple of people who've been at the stadium and a couple of other people who've actually been watching on TV, that since you shifted your media, I presume that's what it is, the media box, to the other stand, recalling that when the stadium was first about to be opened, there was a lot of talk about the, from the architects and all the people, that they had designed these seats especially grey and black, grey and black, so it looked like there were people there when there wasn't a crowd at all, which has been very effective. Now that you've made that stand change for the media box, the sponsor has now got this bilious red, very bright red box and name on the faces of people who are at the ground and watching on TV. And I've watched it on TV, and it does stand out like a sore toe, to the point where if I was Forsyth Bar, I'd be a little concerned. But do you not have some kind of a palette or something that says, look, we don't, this is great, we've sold it, we've got dollars for it, but it would have to fit in with the general surroundings, stand out to what extent you want it to? But putting something that's extremely garish in front of viewer and the people may have a perverse effect? I mean, is it something you think about or look at?
councillor Collins, we're done with question time. We're now in discussion, and I'm not sure this is, I'm not sure this is relevant to noting a report, but I don't expect Mr.
Before you close it off here today, if this hasn't been thought of, it's something that's circulating in the city, that's all I'm.
councillor McCash.
Thank you, worship. I think councillor Thompson, in the question that he asked after mine, underscored my point, but I just, I want to put a line under it. And that is, I think in the discussions that are currently occurring between DCHL and DCC staff around lines of reporting and decision-making around DVML and DVL, there just needs to be some clear decisions made about how information and requests around that funding, which has been flagged up in this DVL report, how they get reported to council and when. So I'm confident that Chief Executive is on to it, but I just think that it's an appropriate time for us to be having that conversation. And the only other thing, I think the point has been made around the community grants stuff, and I do think that there is an area of concern that we do need to be looking at. And if possible, I mean, I take the point about preferentially having a full year, but I think it would be useful for us to have that information as we move into the next budget round, because I do think it impacts on things like community grants as well. Oh, good, yep. And then the final point that I'd make is that I, in looking through the non-financial reporting, the thing that did, it surprises me that rates of recycling above 50% can't be achieved in what is in effect a controlled environment. So you don't have a whole lot of stuff coming in, or you can control that to a degree, especially around things like beverages. I would like, I mean, I take the point that a 6% increase has been made, but perhaps liaising with our waste team would help you achieve greater results in the area. It would be nice to see it trending upwards rapidly.
councillor Thompson.
I just wanted to say, you know, this subject is, whenever you come here down I just wanted to say, you know, this subject is, whenever you come here, Darren, it is inevitable that you're going to be asked all sorts of questions, that I think if I was in your shoes, I would start to think, why do I bother? It's really important to the city that we have this asset deliver as much revenue as it can, and I, even though I'll always be one who'll continue to ask questions about aspects of it, I really do welcome the improvement in revenue, and I welcome the effort from staff that are going in, and I hope that you can always separate out the questions that might be asked about the facility from the desire to see we get the best value out of it that we can. So I wish you the best of luck in that regard.
Discussion. I just note that the achievement of DVML in this report is considerable. Not only have they, have you achieved a reduction in costs, but you've achieved an increase in revenue, so it's definitely trending in the right direction. Although, as chief executive has pointed out, this, the work in progress in some areas, I think you can be commended for the effort that you put in and the results that you achieved. Right, it's been moved, second to that, that's the discussion, so I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. councillor Brown, write a reply. councillor Brown.
Don't want to be cut off at the knees in my last meeting. I think it needs to be said that if you look at the stadium, whether you're for the stadium or against the stadium, it's an asset for Dunedin City. And looking at this asset, it was uncharted orders for the directors of this company in the governance area to come in and manage the first covered stadium in Dunedin. And so therefore it was a massive challenge for them to lock in better than, and I think rightly, they probably overstaffed to make sure that their first experience was a great experience. And now they've taken this time to actually bed it in now to a manageable operational expenditure budget. And I think we need to, as a city, thank the directors of DVML and their staff for the wonderful achievement they've achieved in such a short time. And I'm sure they're going to take this asset to the level which New Zealand sees it as New Zealand's only covered stadium. And I think when you look on the horizon, it's probably going to be New Zealand's only covered stadium for a number of years to come. So thank you.
My apologies councillor Brown, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carry. Well, we'll move on to item 10, delegation during the election period. This graph. This is nine. Oh, sorry, I have sceptics in the annual plan, my goodness. Could I invite Stephen and David Yates, please? Would you like to preface questions with comments?
Just to observe the draft and the process to continue. Please prepare. Prepare the draft for publication, so there's still more work to be done. It's also a point to make that we're three weeks ahead of where we were last year, so that's plus.
Mr. Lowian, would you like to make any comments prior to opening up to questions?
Oh, thank you, worship, yes, I'd like to make a few brief comments. David has just referred to the timetable, and you'll be aware that the reporting deadline for CCOs, the DCHL group in this case, was the end of September. And having got through that process, the audit of council, which of course involves the audit team, but more especially involves the staff management of council itself, basically had to roll into another week to have this process finished, all bar the editorial changes which David has mentioned. So it would not have happened without the constructive and hard-working support from council management and staff, and I'd like to acknowledge that, the help that we've received from council staff, many of whom are sitting here today. So thank you. The numbers are finished, and looking at the income for the year for council, I see that the surplus, the operating surplus, is 8.3 million against the budget of five. So if I was a councillor, I'd be pleased about that much at least. And from the point of view of being the audit director appointed by the auditor general, we have drafted and made available our audit opinion. It's four and a half pages long, I'm afraid, but it is what's known as a clean opinion, or unmodified in the terminology of auditing. So that, in fact, an audit opinion which is clean, delivered on time to an annual report which is on time, with some editorial changes to come, I think is a good achievement all the way. I've drafted a management report which will be made available to council once we've had final comments from management. And in the report to council, I'll be acknowledging what council has done in relation to those issues we've identified in previous times, particularly with respect to the audit of the long-term plan. For those of you who may remember, these are issues that are well-known to you and you've discussed and made decisions on, to do with percentage increases in rates, and we would acknowledge the cost savings which council have implemented already to make those realistic. Secondly, the long-term debt repayment, we acknowledge the focus given by council and the close monitoring and control of capital expenditure to enable the repayment projection period to be decreased. We've just enjoyed some detailed discussion about the stadium, that was number three concern at the time of the long-term plan. So as you know, there's a number of initiatives that council have implemented, funding for community events, an events attraction fund, and converting stadium debt to equity. So we acknowledge that. And fourth and last, the issue of the insurance of council assets, we acknowledge the focus that council has given to that, and consideration of self-insurance as part of a solution moving forward. So there'll be a management report concerning those issues given to council shortly. I might stop there, your worship, and see if there are any more questions to come.
Questions councillors, albeit, Mr. Yates, Mr. Lowian, councillor Brown.
Mr. Lowian, I feel at ease asking this question because I'm not standing for re-election, so therefore it's not an electioneering stunt. But I have some concern personally, that out there in the electioneering process, there is a number of statements about the Dunedin City Council not understanding its finances, that it's not declaring their true financial position. So I put a question clearly to you, and because this has been my answer all along, we are in an audited situation, the auditors have signed off on previous accounts, we've had a statement of position from the chief executive in relation to independent of council, in relation to the council's debt and its finances. So can you assure me that the annual report, once it is audited, does reflect the position of their finances?
A number of things I'd like to say there. It certainly does reflect the position, the financial position of council at the end of June 2013. Secondly, it reflects the operations both in a financial sense and in a service performance sense for the year ending in June 2013. With respect to a question about understanding of councillors as to financial position and how the finances, and particularly the loan situation, works, my answer would be, again, going back to the time of the long-term plan. One of the differences in the 2012 to 22 long-term plan was that council was required to articulate a financial strategy and accept that as part of adopting the long-term plan. And as council did that, it formulated and developed a financial strategy which covers the issues that you've just mentioned in your question. And so as the person who signed that audit report on the long-term plan, I found that the council did have such a well-developed strategy. I can't count for individual councillor's views, opinions or understandings of that, but it's been published and it's been audited.
councillor Stevenson.
Thank you. I think a part, a lot of what this report is, is that it's actually understandable to the layperson, and it's reasonably easy to follow. And on the whole, I do find it quite good. What I like about it is that you can see, you know, highlighted changes, so you can quite easily see where things have changed. I suppose with an economic development where there has been a number of changes, I find that the notes could be strengthened to communicate the reasons for the changes a little clearly. In particular, our change from council communications and marketing, you know, it's dropped a lot. And I know that that's because we're really looking at how we do it, but that's not communicated in the notes. And the other item is in the Dunedin Centre, you can see that there's a change in the funding there, and I know there's reasons for it, but again, if there was some clarity in the notes, then the layperson could see these ebbs and flows and would go, the notes completely explain it. So I think the councillors understand it.
Do you have a question, councillor?
My question was simply that, is that possible for these things to be augmented, to be clearer?
It's possible to be augmented, this is a late stage in the process, but if council can provide better wording or different wording that more people may find explanatory or beneficial, there's no harm in putting that in at this stage.
Sure they can be dealt with in the editorial process. councillor Bazey.
Well, I think Mr. Lowian just might have answered my question, but I'll answer, I'll ask them it anyway. This was a question I put to Dunedin Tourism just last week with regards to information that comes through to council. And just looking at the report, and touching on economic development unit that councillor Stevenson was just referring to, I don't think it is very clear, and I think it's quite misleading. For example, and I'm concerned about the process, I'm concerned about the wording here, because it is sending the wrong message. I happen to think that we have got probably the best economic development unit arguably in the country, but in the percentage of residents' satisfactions with the economic development unit, the goal was 30%, and they reached 19%. Now, there's a whole story in behind why they didn't reach that target, and we're not telling it in this book, in this report. And I think it's important that we do get the message across. For example, residents' reports are influenced by, for example, in jobs with economic development, it could be New Zealand Post, it could be, we have with Inverma at the moment, and of course last year we had it with Hillside. And so unless you read the full story, this information here, in my view, is not, is not relevant, and I think we really should be looking at asking the questions in a different way, so that we get some relevance in behind these figures, because at the moment, it's, in my view, it's misleading. Now, I guess I could say, do you agree with that? And I think you have already, Mr. Lowian, but we certainly do have to look at the process and improve it, so that we get some meaningful figures put into our annual report.
Yeah, I think the stage is to work through our council, our council staff provide wording, and secondly, we look at it before we sign our audit opinion.
Further questions? So it's been moved, so you're going to councillor Hudson, discussion. councillor Thompson.
Look, I realise it's been picked up in questions, but can I just reinforce it? There are sections in this report where major deviations are well-explained by departments, and then you get to other sections where there's a complete absence. So for example, you go to roading and footpaths, and you've got, you know, $4 million general fund revenue versus a budget of 22 million. There are lots of examples, really big variances like that, and I think that somebody does need to go through this. The, I mean, non-current assets held for sale of 26 million, but there's no note. And just bearing in mind the nature of social media comment that goes on around our finances, you know, I just think we just need to be a little more careful to avoid that sort of thing. So I can certainly pass on some comments where I've made them, I won't do it here, but I really think we need to do that. The other comment is, I may well cease to be a councillor on Saturday, but currently still am, and I'd quite like to be noted as one in the annual report, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, I know of six councillors sitting around this table who get paid until Saturday, and I'm just wondering whether they should volunteer to do some of that editorial work. They've got no campaigning to do.
councillor Thompson.
Thank you, worship. I'm very pleased to rise to speak to the approval and adoption of the annual report, acknowledging audit New Zealand and our own staff's contribution to this point. I just wanted to take council back to the overall commitment that the city has made to the wastewater upgrades over the last 20 years, and it's included in paragraph on page 11, and it talks about the $200 million commitment by the city to invest in core infrastructure, to ensure the future of the city is sound going forward in the wastewater area. And I think it's important that the $200 million is acknowledged, that the city, the rate pass of the city have made that commitment. The commitment is not in the short and immediate term, it's over the long term, and I think that that's important, that they've been prepared to absorb the increase in rates without really too much negative feedback, because they recognise that core infrastructure is so important to the city going forward. And the other point I wanted to make was just acknowledging the number of staff that have been involved over the 20-year period, thinking of people like John Henderson from City Consultants, Trevor Buchanan, a former wastewater manager, Daryl Robinson, also a former wastewater manager, and of course, in recent times, John Mackey, water and waste manager. And finally, I would just like to acknowledge previous councils, because there's no way I would be standing here today talking about that commitment if it wasn't for the previous councils long before my time, that made a commitment way back in the early 1992, I think it was, thereabouts, where they committed to a 20-year-plus plan to invest in the city, make all sorts of improvements by removing primary discharge wastewater into the Itagao Harbour, and also taking that same sort of discharge out of the Tyree River. And I'm often reminded by the chairman of the Itagao Regional Council, the current chairman, Stephen Woodhead, about the commitment that the city has made over time, and it has made their job easier in trying to embed or encourage other, probably smaller urban authorities than Dunedin and the Itagao Region, to make a commitment to wastewater improvements. And I think that's certainly helped the ORC to take that message that the city has been committed for a long time and has certainly achieved that significant.
councillor McCash.
Your worship, I just, in supporting this report, the noting of this report or adoption of this report, albeit, I do... albeit I do agree with Commissioner Thompson on some of the points he's made around the detail. I think that it's time to celebrate the year gone past and I do think that this report does a good job of documenting the incredible work that staff have put in, not only at a senior management level, which has resulted in the surplus in the face of significant challenges which have come our way. And I think the Chief Exec in his opening comments makes the point of the weather events that came through, that staff had to face and the St. Clair Sea wall blowout, which also puts stresses on staff resources and budgets. But also the fact that there has been constraints on staff numbers and that all of these things that are outlined in the pages from about 10 through to 14, I think, have been achieved within that framework. And that is, I think that that is quite incredible. I would, a couple of the things that I would like to see considered for inclusion in here, which I personally think are worth noting, is the ongoing work around the biodiversity fund, which has seen so many ratepayers match Dunedin City Council money with their own resource to improve the natural environment, the work that's been done around responsible camping in the area and also the signing off after many decades of discussions of the Pukicura Management Plan and the Hiriweka or Habakon Management Plan. So with those for staff to consider, I think this report is a real testament to the hard work and achievements of staff over the last 12 months and it's something to be celebrated.
Further discussion. Commissioner Brown, your right of reply. Thank you, Worship.
Being the Chair of Finance and Strategy and Development, I take on board the accolades that have been thrown around for the performance of this committee. But I must make it quite clear that no one person can drive a city in a direction. It needs the council members. It's all about democracy and it's all about the council being comfortable about the direction that it's heading. And I'm, I leave this council in this position quite clearly with the thought in mind that I think we've achieved well. We've achieved in an area of financial hardship around the country. We ran into issues as a fallout from the Christchurch earthquake with insurance. We've managed those. We've now got a new structure for the council, which has a very clear budgeting methodology going forward. We've restructured our company governance area and we've seen today the results of that coming through. So I think the city's finances are in good heart. And I think the only thing we have to keep in mind for the future councillors coming forward is that that's all been achieved by some very clear planning, by the introduction of a financial strategy. And in my mind, that should be the blueprint for any visioning and any budgeting in the future, that that's set out there to achieve a goal. Because cities don't achieve things overnight, they're long-term. They need a complete vision about where they're going and they need a strategy to follow it. And it's very heartfelt to hear our auditors say that our finances are in good heart and we've got a clean audit. So I have great pleasure in moving the adoption of the report.
Thank you. I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Now we are going on to item 10. Delegations during the electoral period. Item 10.1. Now, I'll open it up initially, you have the report, I'll open it up for questions for any clarification from Sandy, if anyone wishes it. Is there anyone wish to ask?
I have it put up.
Your move, Secretary. Commissioner Brown, discussion. I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Right, now, we have reached the end of the first part of the public session and at the moment I'm going to move into non-public. I just want to reiterate though, for the benefit of the media and anyone else, for that matter, we will be returning to public after the non-public session for tributes to and valedications from retiring members. So when this, I imagine, be half an hour to an hour, but we will be returning to public for that. So keep that in mind, please. So I'll move from the Chair, that the public be excluded from the following part of the proceedings as on the order paper. Secretary Commissioner Steames, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried.